All right, Robin's gonna get us started.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody doing this morning? Well, I'm gonna start off this morning by kinda just giving you a little bit of information about our story and how this all kinda started. So, at the very beginning, there was a childcare task force that was formed. There was, we knew that there was a huge crisis in Wichita County. We didn't, we don't have appropriate childcare. And so, this task force was formed in order to look at different options. So, in 2018, we completed some community surveys and some focus groups. And that was to get a better understanding of the problem and also get community perspective. So, through that, we moved on and in May of 2019, we had a strategic analyst Shannon Dick out of Garden City, complete a 2019 needs assessment for Wichita County. So, basically, he took a lot of different data from census and other percentages to compile what he thought was an appropriate number of slots that we need. So, out of that needs assessment, we came up with an estimated eighty-four childcare slots short in our county. We only have currently one licensed in-home childcare center here. Now, I do wanna say that we did put out an article in the newspaper that was, it was misinformation. We were told that that particular licensed in-home childcare center was not going to renew. So, that was why we had it at zero, but that was incorrect. There is one that is licensed. So, according to the 2019 State of Kansas Childcare Awareness Report, Wichita County falls in the bottom three counties in Kansas and meets only thirteen percent of the potential demand that we have here for childcare. So, when you look at these numbers down here, I don't want you to look at these and say, "Okay, that's the number of kids in Wichita County," 'cause that's not, that's not how this is comprised. Basically, what happens is they take the census data. There is a percentage of the number, not all children are going to go to daycare. We know that. Not all children in Wichita County are gonna attend the childcare center. So, what they do is the Digestive Education Statistics takes and says, "Okay, there's a percentage of certain age groups that will go to a daycare center or a child, in-home childcare center." That percentage increases as the children age. 'Cause we know that most parents choose to stay home with their kids when they're younger. You know, zero to two, they, they tend to stay home more often and then they send the kids off to childcare centers as they get older. So, as the age increases, so does the number. I mean, of course, here it's counted down, but that's 'cause we had less five-year-olds at that time on the census data. We're gonna move on to the benefits of meeting forty-five percent of the childcare demand in our county. So, the first thing we wanna talk about is job creation. So, the new center will create five new full-time positions. And also, we will have one part-time person. So, it'll be a total of six, but there, there's just the five full-time positions. It'll be one director that directs the entire center, four full-time positions, and then one, one lead teacher that would be a part-time person to fill in. The second thing we wanna talk about is workforce creation. So, currently, we have a lot of parents that choose to stay home 'cause they can't find childcare. If we had appropriate, safe, and affordable childcare for our parents, they would join the workforce. So, we will have more people entering into our workforce. The next thing is the economic impact. So, if you talk to some people right now that are, that are in the workforce, they're having to commute to other communities to take their children to daycare. So, what happens with that typically is, is people tend to spend their money elsewhere because they're having to go elsewhere to drop off their kids, pick up their kids. So, by keeping people local, it'll, it'll help them, help us shop local, help those people shop local. In addition to that, there'll be money coming from the childcare center that will spend, will be spent locally. We'll be shopping here, we'll be purchasing items here for the childcare center. So, that money will also go back into our county. And so, the last thing that we wanna talk about is workforce enhancement. So, currently, you have teachers in your county that are having to take their children to work because they don't have a childcare facility to take them to. You have people that are juggling and taking their kids to three or four different places throughout the week in order to just make it to work. So, that's stressful. It's stressful not only on our employers, but it's also stressful on, on the parents. "What are we gonna do with our child today? My daycare's closed today, it's Friday. Where do I take it? Can Grandma watch?" Why? I personally have a sister-in-law that's had to watch her grandkids at work because the parents can't. So, that's not an answer for our county. That doesn't work for our county. So, we also can't attract people. We can't bring people in to our school or our hospital. One of the very first questions they ask is, "Where am I gonna take my children?" We can't answer that question. We don't have a place for them to go. So, it'll boost recruitment, it's gonna reduce your turnover, it's gonna lower your absenteeism, and it's gonna increase your productivity. People are gonna feel better when they go to work 'cause they're not gonna be worried about their children and where they're at, whether they're taken care of. Is there any questions on that? Oh, we have, so the question was, is do we have a, a director picked out currently? No. We, the, the board just, in the last, at the last board meeting actually, passed the approval of our job description as well as our application. And that is going, it is, it has been put out on, on like, social media and things like, or it hasn't been yet. It will be, okay. So, we're gonna start with the free stuff, putting it out, like Facebook, things like that 'cause we don't wanna spend a lot of our, our funds that we have on advertising for that currently because, you know, we haven't, we haven't started our funding yet. So, but it is important for that director to be part of this. That director does need to come in and, and, and help us design the rooms appropriately and make sure that we get the appropriate equipment and things like that placed in the rooms. So, that is on our radar. Well, the next thing we're gonna talk about is location. So, the task force toured several different facilities. We went to Moscow, Greensburg, and Phillipsburg and toured all three of those childcare centers. So, they were all, they were all different in their own way. Moscow was set up in a school environment. It, it, the building was actually built in between, I believe, to the middle school and the high school. So, so it was more of a school-based center. Greensburg was actually built in the hospital. So, when the tornado went through, they had an opportunity to rebuild their hospital. I hate to put it that way 'cause that's a terrible reason to have an opportunity, but they did. So, they thought ahead and they thought, "What is the biggest problem that we have?" And the biggest problem that they had was childcare. So, the Greensburg Hospital actually built a, added on a childcare center in the hospital. And it is for hospital employees. It's a benefit they provide. So, we go back to that last slide when you're talking about workforce retention and actually attracting people. What they did there was they, they put themselves on the top because that was a benefit that was given to their employees. So, they had more employees rushing to come and work for that hospital because they were gonna have this additional benefit. So, and then, the last one we looked at was Phillipsburg. And so, Phillipsburg is a, just a community nonprofit childcare center, just like what we're trying to talk about. They actually took an old grocery store and remodeled that grocery store and turned it into a childcare facility. What we found interesting about Phillipsburg was that originally, he thought it was going to be cheaper to remodel. That was the original thought process in the Economic Development Director's head. But once they started remodeling that facility, they found all kinds of things. And so, I don't know if any of you in here or even online have experience working with KDHE, but the rules are very, very strict and strenuous. So, all kinds of abatement came into play, they found asbestos, they found a lot of different things in the building that they had to abate. So, the cost increased as time ticked away. It cost them more and more and more to remodel. So, one thing he said was, "If I could've done it all over again, I would've built brand-new." That's the one thing he said. So, that's kinda why we ended up going in that direction was because we didn't wanna fall into an issue where we got into a building and had to spend a bunch of money to abate it. In addition to that, there are regulations with KDHE. So, I don't know if everybody knows, but, but the regulations are, in a childcare setting, that we have to have thirty-five square feet of open space per child. That's number one. Number two is infants and toddlers have to be on ground level. You can't put them in the basement, you can't put them upstairs, they have to be on ground level. Number three is we have to have seventy-five square feet of, of playground space for children. So, with all those regulations, if you look at the, we had a lot of questions about, "What about these open buildings that we have?" You have to look at all those regs and see, is this building logically, can we turn it in to a center? Is there exterior space? Is there enough space on the inside? Are we all on ground level? Well, a lot of the places that we looked at didn't meet that criteria. So, that's another reason why we chose to, to begin this, this USD four-six-seven public-private partnership. So, what that does in that partnership is it allows us to partner with, with several different things. Number one, meal preparation. So, the school already prepares meals for children. They have agreed to prepare meals for the childcare center as well. It's not a huge, it's forty, thirty-five, forty people. It's not a huge stress on them, they're already preparing for a lot of kids. Adding forty children isn't going to be, oh, it's not gonna overwork them or do anything crazy. The other thing is, is groundskeeping. Right now, they already care for that ground out there, it's that empty lot that's located next to the high school there, in between that and the new greenhouse is where our location is. So, he's already mowing it. We'd actually probably decrease his groundskeeping because it'll be concrete. So, he won't have to mow it anymore. The, the third thing is storm shelter. So, we wanna make sure that the kids are safe and have a safe place to go. The school already has a storm shelter and they've allowed to give us access to that storm shelter. So, if there's problems, we can just take the kids into the school storm shelter. And the last thing is activity parking. So, you'll see on a slide coming up here with the, the building layout and things that, and actually, you can't really see it on the picture here, but across the street from where the, across Indian Road, currently where the grassy area is, where people pull up and park in the grassy area, we're gonna put some parking in there. That's the plan. So, we'll add additional parking for the school that they can use during activities and things like that. We will have six parking spaces by the childcare center for staff as well as a couple of handicap spots. So, it will add some additional parking for the school. And then, the school has agreed to lease us the ground for a dollar a year. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's cheap, cheap rent for us. So, yes?
So, in terms of meal preparation in the summer, are we still able to use the facilities if they're not there?
Yeah, so the question is, is that in regards to meal preparation in the summertime and whether or not we'll be able to use the facility to do that. And so, the school has been interested in really boosting their summer feeding program. So, this allows us to do that. So, they'll continue the summer feeding program and, and then continue to help us feed the kids in the summer. As well as, they have agreed to let us, if we need, we can use their facility to cook. And we will also be able to store any excess food in their freezers and things like that, so.
We have a worst-case scenario, if the school doesn't wanna do the summer feeding program, we don't, we can get, we, we can still get the food in on the truck and we can just in-house in the center cook the food just for the short period, you know, the three months. 'Cause we will have a small kitchen in our center.
Yeah, the facility isn't, it, it will have a kitchen, it's just not a gigantic kitchen. Go ahead.
In regards to the outdoor play area, are you wanting to build an outdoor stand, stand, play area? Or do you wanna walk, I can't see, I can't see the kids walking over to the school for playground and walking back and forth. What about if you're at, if you are at the school playground, potty? You know, I need to go potty right away. Where are you going to rush kids to go to the bathroom? And if you had the open playground area at the building, you got access to the bathroom or the play?
Right, you know? So, the, the question is, is whether or not we're gonna add an, an exterior play area? And the answer to that is yes. It, it, you have to. All toys and things have to be age-appropriate. I'm sure you know with KDHE, there's strict guidelines. The school equipment is not age-appropriate for our children, for our age group, for zero to five. So, we are required by KDHE to fence in an area. And, and we'll, we'll go over that here in just a little bit, about what that area's gonna look like, okay? Is there anything else? Yes, ma'am?
And make sure that teachers will get first priority of the slots.
That is still in the works. So, there, the priority system that you guys are referring to has not been. We actually have a working meeting with school coming up.
March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth, thank you, I remember. So, with the school board members. So, we are gonna be hashing out some of these things that, that are still questions, that still have questions, the priority system, how that's gonna look. How these partnerships are gonna work with the school district as far as meal preparation and storm shelter and things like that, the parking. All those things still have to be, we'll have separate, what they call memorandums of understandings. So, those things will be written to kinda cover some of those, those details, so.
No, that's right. On a daycare, I mean, on a daycare provider, I watch the kids now. I'm not licensed because the laws, state laws are ridiculous. I'm very strict. My next question is, what, in the summertime, what about the preschool, not the preschool, the kindergarten kids? If they, they stay here, are you willing to accept extra kids for them to dinner? More than, there'll be more than what you have during the school year?
The center will be licensed and we'll have a cap. Oh, yeah, sorry. So, so it was, the question was whether or not in the summertime, we will increase our capacity for, to take the kids from preschool. And the answer to that is, is that you know as well as I do, there's licensing requirements, space requirements, it'll be capped out. I mean, we can only take this many kids according to KDHE. So, we do have some room with the designs of our, our different areas and our different rooms to double license some of those rooms, to mix some numbers a little bit so that we can increase and decrease, we have a little bit of flexibility. Is it gonna be huge? No, I mean, the flexibility, we're talking five kids, it's not, it's not a huge flexibility. But, that's all our space allows. I mean, that's all the square footage. When you're talking about square footage from KDHE, you're talking about open square footage, not square footage of the building. Anything you place as a permanent structure in that building, countertops, storage units, you know, cubbies, that bathrooms, that takes away, picks away slowly but surely at your open square footage that you have to have as a plan. So, that has to be planned out really, really, really specifically. And actually, even with our architect, talking to him, we, we, we expanded the building a bit to give us some room to lose space during construction. Because we all know that during construction, you might say, "Your square footage is gonna be this," but when you actually get it built, get everything put in, it turns into this. So, we, we opened it up a little bit more and made it a little larger so that during construction, we have some room to lose. 'Cause if we lose where we were at originally, we, we weren't gonna be able to take any more kids. So, this allowed us more space to take additional kids, so.
Another thing to keep in mind during the summer, some teachers may decide to keep their kids home during the summer. And so, if those want to open up, we may be able to take older kids. So, there will be a shelter in the summer just depending on the need of the center.
So, we're gonna go ahead and talk about the building. Building specifications, so the building is going to be thirty, three thousand five hundred sixty-five square feet in total. It's, it'll be wood-framed. It'll be, the exterior will be a mix of brick and stucco. It'll have a metal roof and it'll have a warming kitchen. So, the warming kitchen, we say a warming kitchen, it, it will be fully equipped. It'll have a stove, refrigerator, dishwasher. It just, it's pretty small, you know? So, it, you can prepare meals in there, but it wouldn't be as easy as doing it over in the kitchen, I guess, so. So, will be connected to the USD four-six-seven fire and tornado alarm system. So, we will be able to utilize their alarm system. And then, the classrooms, each classroom will have the ability to adjust its own temperature and will have sinks, toilets, cubbies, and casework designed for its specific age group. So, we have to have short toilets, short sinks, reachable, kids can climb up easy, things like that. So, cubbies will be at their height so they can access those pretty, pretty easily. So, the parking, we'll have six staff parking spaces up beside the building and you'll see that on the plan, as well as two handicap parking spaces in the front. There'll be a circle drive along the Indian Road that people can, that the parents can come in and drop off and pick up. And then, there'll also be six additional parking spaces across the street that we would add in. So, there is parking in front of where the building will go now and so, we'll just add the same type of parking on the other side of Indian Road. So, the playground will be one thousand nine hundred twenty square feet of preschool playground and then five hundred and seventy-six square feet of toddler playground. So, we have to fence off a smaller area for those toddlers and infants and with, with age-appropriate toys and things like that. There'll be a six-foot chain link fence with a gate access around it. And then, the, the ground covering will be a mix of hard, soft, and, and natural grass surfaces, so. And you'll see kind of what that looks like in the plan here. Whether, the question was whether or not the playground would be locked. We would have, be able to lock it. And, and, you know, with a chain link fence, you can put a lock on it, stick it through the gate and put a lock on it. It's not gonna stop people from climbing over, but.
I mean, I think the day stays up for emergency purposes. Like, what if the building were to catch a fire and you did not lay down, you know, you didn't have a safety?
Right. Is there any other questions about the building?
I have a question on Facebook. With school closures, would the daycares still be open, being tied in with the school lunches and shelters, etc.? So, I think the question is, Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, if the school's closed during the summer, will the daycare still be running? And how will we have access to the school for the shelter?
That's, those are things that we're gonna work through during this working meeting with the school board on how we will have access to the storm shelter, the kitchen, things like that if needed. So, it will be addressed with the school board though, so we'll have access.
I will add that we will be open during the summer. We will be open during Christmas break. We will not be closed when the school is closed. We will have our open hours and we will have our own schedule.
Correct.
I mean, the only other thing to consider is if it's snowing outside and it's closer to you, the school site is closed because it's hazardous to get out, we may close the crowd care center because we have to follow some sort of safety guidelines. So, in those regards, we may have to follow school's judgment on the weather and policy.
Oh, next here is the actual floor plan. So, here is the, the front, here's the front of the building. So, there's a vestibule coming in. These doors will always be, this door here would always be locked for safety purposes. So, there would be a buzzer or some sort of a, we're not sure how that's gonna look yet, but there'll be some sort of a, a system that when people enter and wanna come in and, and pick up their kids, the director's office is located here, there's a big window that they can see out and see who's there and then they can buzz them in. So, for safety purposes, all the doors will always be secure. There will never be open and unlocked doors, so the kids will always be safe. This pointing out towards Indian Road, so if you're envisioning, and you'll see that in the, in the next slide as well. So, this is your north. So, here is the, your two preschool rooms, it will start there. So, preschool room number one, right here, is, is going to be for two and a half to school age. So, ages two and a half and up. The, the ratio, so, so the ratio for two and a half years to school age is one to ten, meaning that for every ten children, we have to have one staff member in that room. And they're always, and keep in mind that in all of these rooms, there always has to be a lead teacher present. So, if that person is just the only person, they're going to have to fall in that lead teacher category, okay? So, preschool number two is going to be ages three and up. And the reason why we did that is because there's a difference in ratio. So, three years old and up, we can have one to twelve. So, we can have one staff member in this room with twelve kids instead of one to ten. So, that ups our capability of taking two additional preschoolers in that room by doing, licensing them a little bit differently. Your toddler is going to be in this corner here. And you can see there's restrooms for each, there's laundry facilities here, so we would have a washer and dryer. But your, your toddlers are twelve months to two and a half years is where those fall. And so, in this particular room, the square footage allows us to have ten children in there, ages two and a half.
Can you just keep going?
Yes. Yeah. It'll allow us to have ten children in there, ages two and a half, or I mean, ages twelve months to two and a half. So, with that, we have to have two staff members. So, you, you would have one lead teacher and then one additional person that would be in there. And then, you have your infant room. So, infants is where it gets a little bit difficult. The staff to child ratio for infants is one to three. So, for every three babies, you have to have one staff member. So, unfortunately, we can only take three infants in that room. So, we will have one staff member that will be there and they will be able to have three, zero to twelve months or, and walking. So, they have to be walking in order to move into the toddler room, if that makes sense. So, we do have a little bit of capability in this room. As you can see, there's four cribs. And the reason why there's four cribs is because we can double license this room for eight children. And so, you can take four infants, but you have to have two staff in order to, to be able to do that. So, we would have to have two people in this room in order to take the four infants that we would like to take. So, that is kind of, that's, we're trying to set up the, the licensing as flexible as possible so that we can double license rooms so that our, our director has the ability to move kids around, break things down at the end of the day. Because at the end of the day, you can break some of these rooms down and send some staff home to save money and, and put them all into one room. If you have this one room double licensed as, okay, we can put a mix of infants and toddlers and preschool kids into this one room at the end of the day. So, um, let's see what else I have.
So, in their, playing the playground or whatever, will they be, you can mix age groups like that?
You have to keep, you have to have the preschool playground and then the infant and toddler playground. So, the infant and toddlers would be in one area of the playground, which is that five hundred and seventy-six square feet that we talked about. Then, your preschool kids would be the nineteen, twenty. So, the question was whether or not we can mix the kids in the playground area. And you, you can't really mix the infants and toddlers with the preschoolers, so, in the playground.
I was thinking about siblings, what they would see during the day.
Right, through the, through the fence or something, yeah, so.
We'll be able to see in the pictures that where the toddler area is, we, our committee came up with some really nice panels. So, if there's an older sibling and the younger sibling, they'll be able to see each other and they can actually play with each other through these little panels.
Interact, so.
Yeah. And that's a KDHE regulation, so that's a KDHE.
So, I want you to keep in mind, it says six staff, thirty-five children total. So, six staff is one director. And so, KDHE guidelines say that if the center is under sixty children, your director can play dual roles. So your director can direct, and your director can also come in and be a filler. And fill in, in rooms and be a teacher. We have to have that because it's, you know, we can't just pay a director just to sit in an office all day. So that director position, well, it will be doing both. It'll have to fill in when, when, when maybe one other teacher might be gone, or sick, or ill, or have to take some time off. Or if, if, let's say you've got, uh, a lot of toddlers in this room and you need those two people. And, and then over here, we, we've got mixed, and we've got, you know, four babies in here. Maybe she can fill in over here in this toddler room, or fill in in the infant room when needed.
For lunch breaks.
Or for lunch breaks, yeah, breaks and things like that. So, um, we'll have one. The way it's working out with our financials is, like she said, we've got it set up as ten-hour days. Um, kinda gotta figure out how many staff we're gonna have to have to cover. So, uh, we have it now with, with the one director, the four full-time staff, and then one person at thirty hours a week, which would be a part-time person. So, uh, you know, that might end up being six full-time. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say until we, we get, we get the director in there and start actually hammering out the, the hours and things like that in the coverage, so.
One thing I was gonna say with the staff and toddlers, so K D H has put their regulations on two hours before, sorry, after school. It could be out of ratio to help with the influx of kids.
Before and after school.
Before, after school, but that's only two-hour weekends, so it could be out of ratio.
Yeah. So we can take more, we can take those, uh, before and after-school kids and kind of be out of our, our staff ratio for just a few hours during the day. So. Yes.
Uh, this concerns, uh, kind of the medical, you know, sort of. Uh, if a child happens to get sick, throw, uh, a while they're in daycare. Do you have, are you gonna have a space, corner for that sick child to go to lay down while they're, uh, wa, awaiting their parents to kind of pick them up? And, uh, if we've got a child that will be having medical problems, that needs medicine during the day, is, uh, are you gonna have a nurse on hand or available to come in and give them the medicine? Or is a teacher gonna be able? Usually, I've been to other daycares at, um, centers and parks, and and they've always had to have a, a nurse available or on hand or in the building that only provides the medicine. They only can see, give out the medicine. Uh, are you gonna have some kind of facility for that?
No, that's not the plan. We, it's not required of K D H here for us to have a, a nurse on hand, I guess.
It does require for us now a policy.
Yeah.
About how we run a handholding center, so we haven't developed that yet. And we may reach out to Marvel branch, so if we speak down the road, maybe she can help us in a certain situation that we need to provide medicine. But we haven't addressed that with her, and we haven't worked on the policy. Right now, we're working on the building and trying to figure out how we're gonna make it work, and those things will come out.
Um, this is my last slide here that I'm gonna do. Jenny's gonna pick up from here, but you can see, this is the full site plan. So here, um, here, let's see. Look, here's Indian Road, right here. And so here's your existing stalls, parking stalls that you currently have. So this doesn't put, uh, show on this slide, but across the street here would be your other six stalls that we would put in with this project. Um, it gives us easy access to the crosswalk to get across, to get the food back and forth from, um, from the grade school. And then here, you'll see there's some staff parking that is gonna go in. Um, you'll have the circle drive, and then it will have some handicap spots. This is the playground area. So it, you know, you can kind of see here, here's your infant and toddler space that you, that we talked about originally. So this would be fenced off, and then this would be the rest of the playground. There would be access doors to go out here, and then this would be sidewalks all the way around. So.
We have a question on Facebook.
Okay.
Are we aware of qualifications that are needed for training hours, et cetera, for staff members? And if they're not qualified, how do we manage to get them?
So that actually falls on the director. The director has to do all the training, that's their requirement. So the director has their specific, um, educational requirements that the director has to have per K D H. Which was why we sent our job description to them to be reviewed. So they reviewed it, they came back, they said, yes, it's, it's approved. Um, these are the qualifications that this particular director has to have. Then it's that director's responsibility to come up with the training for the lead teachers and the staff and keep up with those requirements within the facility. K D H does have guidelines, and yes, we are aware that there's a lot of training guidelines and things that are, that are required by them, so.
The other question is, um, is this additional parking to what is already provided up at the school?
Yes, there would be six additional spaces across the street from Indian Road that would be added in. And these parking spaces here, I mean, during the day, when the, when the, when the childcare is in operation, um, we would ask that people don't use them because that's where our staff is going to be parked here. And then as well as, you know, our handicapped. But after hours and during games and things like that, when the school is, is doing things and having activities, and we're not open, I mean, it's, it just adds additional parking for people that are coming to watch, watch a game or, or attend a, you know, an activity at the school, so.
So where are the, the kids who are, you're gonna be between the school and the GOAT department, right?
Right, right.
So where will they be walking, go to and from?
There's, there will still be a sidewalk in there.
There's still be a sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk in front of it.
Yeah, here's the existing sidewalk that's there right now.
That's what I was.
Yeah, so there's this, the sidewalk will still stay. There, it won't, we won't take that out. The kids will still have a route to get back and forth.
How close is the school and the, the GOAT center on each side?
Uh, I, I, that would be an architect question. I would have, and he's, he's on there, but I.
It kind of shows you the building right there.
Yeah, like here's, like, it kind of shows that building down here. Um, but I don't have the exact, we have to be, but we have to be close enough where we can connect to their, uh, lift station for the waste, for solid waste. So we do have to use that lift station, um, um, for, for our solid waste, so. But yeah, I do, I don't know exactly what this space is, so. Oh, yeah, so here's what the front, what we envisioned the front of the building to look like. Here, you can see, here's your round top back over here behind, so, am I in the way? Can you see, okay? So, and then this is what it would look like from the top view. So our playground committee worked really, really hard because they, they had a vision for it to be a more natural playscape instead of having a bunch of, of toys, as a toy. So, so what we're gonna do is more educational things. Things like sandboxes, uh, planters to plant, plant since, to grow things. Um, you know, a willow, what'd you call that? A tunnel, willow tunnel. There'll be, uh, just stumps that they can climb on, uh, uh, hills they can roll down, things like that. Not a lot of, of toys and things like that. Here's kind of a more of an inside view, and you can see we, they have envisioned some panels there that can be interactive panels for the kids on the inside. So this would be your toddler and infant space, and then out here would be your, your preschool space. So we, they kind of, kind of wanted to go more movable to where we can kind of move things around if we want to, or, you know. Because K D H doesn't care as long as your ground covering is appropriate underneath. So if we have a large rock boulder here for the kids to climb on, as long as we have fall-safe uh, coverage, ground coverage, and the appropriate square footage around, then we can move that if we want to move it over here, you know, or move the log to another spot, or things like that. So, um, as you can see, like there here, there's a slide, but it's a slide built into a hill. You know, so it's dual-use, that way they can roll down the hill, or they can slide down the hill, whatever they wanna do, you know? So, and then, of course, we wanted to have a lot of trees for, for windbreak, things like that, so that, um, yeah. Is there any other questions about these three? All right, well, I'm gonna turn over to Jenny, she's gonna take a rest. So thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, so now we're gonna get in more into like the financials, the operating costs of the childcare center. So everyone's been asking, what are we gonna charge? And our goal as a childcare center is to be affordable. And right now, with our operating budget, we are looking at a hundred and fifty dollars per week for infants to two-year-olds. That's a, with a ten-hour workday, that's three dollars an hour. For two-and-a-half to older kids, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-five dollars a week. That equates to two dollars and seventy cents an hour. Um, and then for before and after-school program, we're looking at ten dollars a day. So, um, recently, we have talked to D C F, which is Department for Children and Families, and we understand that maybe not all families can, you know, pay three dollars an hour or two-seventy. And so depending on your family income, size, and work schedule, the maximum subsidy that you could get for these age groups is three dollars and sixty-eight cents per hour for infants, the two-year, two-and-a-half-year-olds. You're gonna say, well, that price is higher than ours. Well, they told us if we charge a lower rate, they will only reimburse that family three dollars. So if we wanted to, we could, you know, increase our infant rate and match theirs. So you could get, you know, we'd get more funding, the family'd get more funding, but does that make it affordable for everybody? So right now, that's why we're kind of keeping it at three dollars, because we don't know the families that don't qualify for maximum subsidy because they pay three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, for the two-and-a-half-year-old, the school age, um, V C F is at two sixty-nine, we're at two-seventy. So we basically, um, it just made sense to match up with theirs depending on what local rates are charging and average rates around the state. Um, they did indicate with these, um, prices, you know, generally eighty-five percent of centers are charging three sixty-eight or lower. Um, sixty-five percent of the centers are charging sixty-nine or lower. So infants, generally, they charge more.
Jenny, can you talk about, um, how quickly families would be able to use V C F once the center goes?
So when we talked to D C F, we can't apply until we are fully licensed with K D H. And once we are fully licensed, we can go through the paperwork. She told me, uh, she told us on the phone that it could take thirty to ninety days for the paperwork to process. So at the most, I would say three months.
Looking, is that something that you would help the parents to be able to apply for those subsidies? Or would that be something they already had?
So this is how I think we envision it. They'll come to the center, and they say, we need a childcare center spot, and they visit with the director. And they say, you know, our income is this, I don't know if we can afford it. And that's when the director would step in and say, well, we got these options with D C F, and they'd help them through the paperwork. So looking on the other end, you know, we're gonna need staff to work there. Right now, um, I've got a range, but as I go to the next slide, I want you to keep in mind that our cash flow is considering a six, thirty-six thousand dollar director pay, twelve-dollar-an-hour lead teacher, and nine-dollar-an-hour assistant lead teacher. We are starting at the max. We feel like in order to get quality teachers, we needed to, we need to pay them to keep them here. So that's what we're trying to go for. If we need to adjust, you know, we may have to back that off a little bit, you know, in the future. Um, I did, according to Childcare Ware, director's salary normally across the state is thirty-two thousand. So we are actually higher here, starting at thirty-six. Lead teachers are typically at eleven, and the assistants are nine, so. Um, we talked about this earlier, but as a board, we've, um, discussed, we're for sure gonna be open for ten hours a day and five days a week. We will be closed for some federal holidays, we just haven't nailed down which days, you know, this will be. Okay, so now looking at the center at full capacity. As you can see, with the nonprofit, it cash flows, but we don't have a lot, a, we don't make much of a profit. That's why we're nonprofit, I guess. You know, so looking at the operating income, you'll see, um, tuition factors in the prices I put in the previous slide, the hundred and fifty dollars a week and a hundred and thirty-five dollars a week. It also includes a food program reimbursement. So we'll, we will, um, be part of a food program. So we'll get reimbursed for breakfast, lunch, and snack. And these prices can reflect a percentage of people that may utilize that food program. Um, and then looking at the operating expenses, we've included, um, utilities, maintenance, supplies, insurance, training, food. You know, we worked with Shannon, he's the one that gave us the numbers as to what our community needs. In addition to that, he helped us, you know, come up with a cash flow that, he had data to all, he had data with all these centers of like what it costs to put something together. So he kind of helped us with the cash flow, and we tweaked it some to fit our situation. So looking at this scenario, we do cash flow, not much. Um, the importance of looking at this before I show the next thing is this works if we don't have a mortgage payment. We can cash flow. So it's important, as we talk about this project, that we're trying to pay for the building now so we don't have to have a mortgage payment. Because if we put in a hundred and eighty-four thousand mortgage payment, we've talked to Wheatland Electric, they have a hundred and eighty-four thousand that they could lend us for ten years at zero percent interest. But if we do that, we're in the red. So we either one, have to increase our tuition, or two, lower our personnel pay to make that work. So as I go through the slides of how we're gonna make this come a reality, we really don't wanna take out a loan because that's gonna cause tuition and personnel changes. So how did we get this far? How did we get all the architect plans? You know, we first started in two thousand and eighteen with match day. You know, I think that year we brought in like nine thousand dollars. So that kind of helped us get started, and we, you know, we, uh, worked with Architect Wish Talk. But before, we could sign the agreement to work on construction documents and finalize the plans, we needed more money. And so Economic Development, uh, believed in our project, and they granted us twenty thousand dollars. And then from there, in, uh, November two thousand and nineteen on match day, we brought in another twenty-one thousand. So this combines both match days, but their biggest, the biggest group of that match day came from this year, and we brought in twenty-one thousand. And then in the fall, we applied to Western Kansas Community Foundation to help us with architectural fees. And they granted us ten thousand. The exciting thing about Western Kansas Community Foundation, they notified us after they granted us the ten thousand, and that's the most that they have ever given in organizations. They typically only give five. And so they really believe in our project, and they, I think they're featuring an article on it, so I guess, be on the lookout. So that's exciting, you know, that they gave us more than they typically do. Um, Harstring Superstrings Grant, um, gave us a thousand dollars. And then you've seen us throughout the community, you know, we've sold donuts, we've done, we've done whatever. So between fundraisers and other donations from Mushroom State Bank and other individuals, we brought in another sixty-seven hundred dollars. So since two thousand and eighteen, we brought in sixty-eight thousand, and this is where our money went. Forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars has went to architect fees. Because we need a plan to show everybody what our vision is. We need to show the grantors what our vision is, so they will reward us grant money. The rest of the money, four thousand, eighty-three dollars, went to professional fees. That includes soil testing, getting the data done, you know, for this county, the nonprofit setup, I mean, that's kind of professional fees. Currently, in our growing balance, we've got nineteen thousand. That, we've got enough money to pay for the rest of the architect fees, but not much, but not much more. So we've kept the architect going. I mean, our group, every time we do a fundraiser, you know, we, each of us are like, well, I, I've got hamburger, I'll donate. Like this, this, these dollars don't even include the dollars that the, the board has contributed to this project, so.
Um, I mean, there, it just, the list goes on of all the different businesses in town that have stepped up. And, and individuals, hey, I'll make brownies, I'll do this, I'll, you know, I'll buy the brownie mix. I mean, it, it's been amazing, and that doesn't even reflect that, so.
And I think another thing to note is that we've realized we're not gonna pay for a childcare center, how to fundraise. But as you can see, you know, it's keeping us going. And so you're gonna see more fundraisers from us because that's all we have, and it's helping, helping.
Well, just, I mean, just the other day, we talked about our board meeting. We're gonna apply for community service tax credits, but just to submit the application, it costs two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, so I know those little fundraisers don't bring in a lot, but it's paying those little fees to hopefully bring in more money, um, to the community. Okay. Okay, so now we're gonna get in more into like the financials, the operating costs of the childcare center. So everyone's been asking, what are we gonna charge? And our goal. Our goal as a childcare center is to be affordable. And right now, with our operating budget, we are looking at $150 per week for infants to two-year-old. That's a, with a 10-hour workday, that's $3 an hour. For two-and-a-half to older kids, we're looking at $135 a week. That equates to $2.70 an hour. And then for before and after-school program, we're looking at $10 a day. So recently, we have talked to DCF, which is Department for Children and Families, and we understand that maybe not all families can, you know, pay $3 an hour or $2.70. And so depending on your family income, size, and work schedule, the maximum subsidy that you could get for these age groups is $3.68 per hour for infants, the two-year, two-and-a-half-year-olds. You're gonna say, "Well, that price is higher than ours." Well, they told us if we charge a lower rate, they will only reimburse that family $3. So if we wanted to, we could, you know, increase our infant rate and match theirs. So you could get, you know, we'd get more funding, the family would get more funding. But does that make it affordable for everybody? So right now, that's why we're kinda keeping it $3, because we don't know the families that don't qualify for maximum subsidy, because they pay $3.68. For the two-and-a-half-year-old, the school age, VCF is at $2.69. We're at $2.70, so we basically, it just made sense to match up with theirs, depending on what local rates are charging and average rates around the state. They did indicate with these prices, you know, generally 85% of centers are charging $3.68 or lower. 65% of the centers are charging $69 or lower. So infants, generally, they charge more.
Jenny, can you talk about how quickly families are able to use DCF?
So when we talked to DCF, we can't apply until we are fully licensed with KDAG. And once we are fully licensed, we can go through the paperwork. She told me, she told us on the phone that it could take 30 to 90 days for the paperwork to process. So at the most, I would say three months. Looking...
Was that something that you would help the parents be able to apply for those subsidies? Or would that be something they already had?
So this is how I think we envision it. They'll come to the center and they say, "We need a childcare center spot." And they visit with the director and they say, "You know, our income is this. I don't know if we can afford it." And that's when the director would step in and say, "Well, we got these options with DCF." And they'd help them through the paperwork. So looking on the other end, you know, we're gonna need staff to work there. Right now, I've got a range. But as I go to the next slide, I want you to keep in mind that our cash flow is considering a $36,000 director pay, $12 an hour lead teacher, and $9 an hour assistant lead teacher. We are starting at the max. We feel like in order to get quality teachers, we needed to, we need to pay them to keep them here. So that's what we're trying to go for. If we need to adjust, you know, we may have to back that off a little bit, you know, in the future. I did, according to Childcare Ware, director salary normally across the state is $32,000. So we are actually higher here, starting at 36. Lead teachers are typically at 11, and the assistants are 9, so. We talked about this earlier, but as a board, we've discussed, we're for sure gonna be open for 10 hours a day and five days a week. We will be closed for some federal holidays. We just haven't nailed down which days, you know, this will be. Okay, so now looking at the center at full capacity. As you can see, with the nonprofit, it cash flows, but we don't have a lot, a, we don't make much of a profit. That's why we're nonprofit, I guess. You know, so looking at the operating income, you'll see tuition factors in the prices I put in the previous slide, the $150 a week and $135 a week. It also includes the food program reimbursement. So we will be part of the food program. So we'll get reimbursed for breakfast, lunch, and snack. And these prices can reflect a percentage of people that may utilize that food program. And then looking at the operating expenses, we've included utilities, maintenance, supplies, insurance, training, food. You know, we worked with Shannon. He's the one that gave us the numbers as to what our community needs. In addition to that, he helped us, you know, come up with a cash flow that, he had data to all, he had data with all these centers of like what it costs to put something together. So he kinda helped us with the cash flow, and we tweaked it some to fit our situation. So looking at this scenario, we do cash flow, not much. The importance of looking at this before I show the next thing is this works if we don't have a mortgage payment. We can cash flow. So it's important, as we talk about this project, that we're trying to pay for the building now so we don't have to have a mortgage payment. Because if we put in $184,000 mortgage payment, we've talked to Wheatland Electric. They have $184,000 that they could lend us for 10 years at 0% interest. But if we do that, we're in the red. So we either, one, have to increase our tuition, or, two, lower our personnel pay to make that work. So as I go through the slides of how we're gonna make this come a reality, we really don't wanna take out a loan, because that's gonna cause tuition and personnel changes. So how did we get this far? How did we get all the architect plans? You know, we first started in 2018 with Match Day. You know, I think that year, we brought in like $9,000. So that kinda helped us get started, and we, you know, we worked with Architect Wish Talk. But before, we could sign the agreement to work on construction documents and finalize the plans. We needed more money. And so Economic Development believed in our project, and they granted us $20,000. And then from there, in November 2019 on Match Day, we brought in another $21,000. So this combines both Match Days, but their biggest, the biggest group of that Match Day came from this year, and we brought in $21,000. And then in the fall, we applied to Western Kansas Community Foundation to help us with architectural fees, and they granted us $10,000. The exciting thing about Western Kansas Community Foundation, they notified us after they granted us the $10,000, and that's the most that they have ever given in organizations. They typically only give five. And so they really believe in our project, and they, I think they're featuring an article in it, so I guess, be on the lookout. So that's exciting, you know, that they gave us more than they typically do. Heartstrings to Purstings Grant gave us $1,000. And then you've seen us throughout the community. You know, we sold donuts, we've done, we've done whatever. So between fundraisers and other donations from Mushroom State Bank and other individuals, we brought in another $6,700. So since 2018, we brought in $68,000, and this is where our money went. $44,965 has went to architect fees, because we need a plan to show everybody what our vision is. We need to show the granters what our vision is, so they will reward us grant money. The rest of the money, $4,083, went to professional fees. That includes soil testing, getting the data done, you know, for this county, the nonprofit setup, I mean, that's kinda professional fees. Currently, in our growing balance, we've got $19,000. That, we've got enough money to pay for the rest of the architect fees, but not much, but not much more. So we've kept the architect going. I mean, our group, every time we do a fundraiser, you know, we, each of us are like, "Well, I, I've got hamburger, I'll donate." Like this, this, these dollars don't even include the dollars that the, the board has contributed to this project, so.
I mean, it just, the list goes on of all the different businesses in town that have stepped up. And, and individuals, "Hey, I'll make brownies, I'll do this, I'll, you know, I'll buy the brownie mix." I mean, it's been amazing, and that doesn't even reflect that, so.
And I think another thing to note is that we've realized we're not gonna pay for a child care center, help with fundraising. But as you can see, you know, it's keeping us going. And so you're gonna see more fundraisers from us, because that's all we have.
Well, just, I mean, just the other day, we talked about our board meeting. We're gonna apply for community service tax credits. But just to submit the application, it costs $250. You know, so I know those little fundraisers don't bring in a lot, but it's paying those little fees to hopefully bring in more money to the community. Okay, so now the estimated cost of the project. According to the architect, they estimate the building, the circle drive, and the parking to cost $800,000. And we get it built, we've got the parking, but we have no supplies, so, or appliances. So now we've estimated $25,000. And some people say that that may be low. And the thing is, we're looking at it as that we might not have this thing equipped with 100% of what we need starting day one. But $25,000 will get us going, you know? And then we can either ask for, get other donations or grants in the future that makes the facility better with supplies. We estimate the playground costs about $20,000. Another reason why we went more natural playscape than actual like structures like at Parks, because natural playscape is a lot cheaper to put in than permanent structures. And then to account for some miscellaneous expense, like printing costs and additional soil testing, I've got $5,000. So the estimated project cost is $850,000. And we are going to accept in-kind donations of toys and equipment. So as you clean out your, if you're done having kids and you're done with toys, please reach out to us, and we'll find a place to hold on to some of these items till the child care center gets built. Okay, so now the building costs $850,000. How are we gonna, how are we gonna pay for this thing? Today, I guess, we're asking the community and businesses to either pledge or donate $200,000. And why is that important? Not only does it help our project, but as we look at grants and tax credit applications, we are scored based off of, one, need a project. We've shown we have a need. Two, solution, do we have a solution? We've come up with a solution. And finally, it's community support. If we don't have community support, a granter or the tax credit application committee isn't gonna grant us money to bring, to build this project. So we need to show them with pledge letters, any sort of document to show that we have community support. How are we gonna raise $200,000? Okay, we've put around, we've thought of different scenarios. What if 15 families in this community donated $5,000 for three years? That'd bring in $225,000. What if that's not doable? Okay, what if we got 25 families to donate $3,000 a year, totally $9,000 over three years? That would bring us $225,000. Okay, what if, though, what if, what if we need to lower it some more? Okay, what if 50 community members decided they would donate $1,500 a year? That would still bring in the $225,000 we need. And I went back last night and counted how many people donated on Match Day. And we had 67 individuals and businesses donate on 2019 Match Day. So if 50 of those 67 decided that they would just donate $1,500 a year, we would have the $200,000 to show the tax credit committee and other granters that we need this project. Anyways, I have some other scenarios there, but if your donation will help bring this project into reality. Okay, so I talked a lot about community service tax credits. That is goal number two. We are currently, we've reached out to some of the local individuals about this tax credit application already. It's actually gonna be released on the 15th, and it's due here in May. But we're going to request $250,000 of community service tax credits. And everyone's gonna say, "Jenny, how did you get $357 when you're only requesting $250,000?" Well, this is how it works. Okay, if a donor decides to make a hundred dollar, if a donor decides to buy, give a gift of $100, we can then give you a $70 tax credit to go towards your state local taxes, making the only donation to our organization 30. So growing and learning still gets the $100. You get this $70 tax credit. So that's how $250,000 turns into $350,000. You, 70% of it, you get back to put in your local taxes, but you're donating the other 30%. So anyone that, any business or individual subject Kansas income tax can qualify, there is a minimum. You can, donations have to be at least $250. And like I said previously, in order to get this approval, it states strictly in the application, we have to have pledge letters, a financial report. And it's crucial for community service tax credit approval. So I guess that's another reason why we did our town hall meeting. If you're planning on pledge and you feel passionate about this project like we do, reach out to us and write a pledge letter, so we can submit with your application, so we can bring tax dollars to Wish Talk County. Does any, this is kinda confusing. Does anyone have any questions concerning the tax credits? We did have, an individual said that they would help us sell the tax credits, so we feel confident that we could sell the $250,000. So we get the, we get the tax credits, we get approved, and we'll find that out in July. Once we have 40% of the total projects raised, we can submit a grant to the Mavy Foundation, and they support projects, construction projects. The Mavy Foundation will grant up to 20% of the total cost of the project. That's how I got the 170, that's how we got the $170,000. Like I said, they require that 40% of the project is raised before we can apply, and they meet quarterly. So if we happen to raise that 40% before June, we could actually apply in July to get the $170,000. But in my scenario, we're gonna use the tax credits to show that we have a 40%. And so with the tax credits, we won't be able to apply until October. Anyways, the kicker is with the Mavy, with the Mavy Foundation, they're challenge grants, meaning that we must raise the remaining funds required to finish the project within one year of the, of the wording of the grant. So, yeah, the thing is, we're gonna get it, and we're gonna make sure, we're not gonna lose that money. So we just gotta make sure we come up with the rest of the funds to get this thing built. Some other things that are included, foundation grants can be included in the 40%. Donations from individuals and businesses, who I've talked about with the pledges. Again, they want community support, community service tax credits works, and then in-kind gifts and donation can go towards that 40%. What cannot be included is the loans, other government grants, and the state requests. So like that Wheatland Electric loan, I love it. It's 0% interest in this 10 years, but it's not gonna help us get grant money. You know, it might help fill in the gaps, but it doesn't count towards the 40% to get this grant. And we have been in contact with them, and so we emailed them, and they, they did confirm that community tax credits could work. Okay, so the next goal is, we raised the $200,000. We get the $250,000 tax credits. We get the $170,000 of Mavy Foundation. We've got $123,000 still left to come in to pay for this building. We have identified other funding opportunities. I don't think I'm out, the A Coalition recently just submitted a grant application for Part II of the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Pathways Grant. So some of that money will help fund this project. We've identified a Health and Human Services, Community Service Block grant that potentially we may qualify and could apply for. We've got Midwest Energy. Again, we've got the Wheatland Electric Loan Fund if we need to help fill in the gap. But like I said, if we have to use the Wheatland Loan Fund to come up with the $103,000, we'll have to make some adjustments on the tuition and the personnel pay. We got Western Kansas Community Foundation and Wish Talk County Community Foundations, the things we have identified. We're constantly looking, and, you know, we've reached out to Childcare Ware, and people know about our project, so they're forwarding us, you know, other funding opportunities as they become available. And then finally, you know, when I was looking at the cash flow, our net profit wasn't very much. Now it's at full capacity. And I know some of you are probably thinking, "You're not gonna be at full capacity day one." And we all know that. And so we have identified another grant, the Downing Family Foundation. And we plan to apply, once we have all these other ducks been confirmed, and we can build this project, they will actually grant money to go to operating expenses. And I think our project fits perfectly. They, the foundation favors initiatives within Kansas, and they like programs that impact quality of life for communities, and a significant number of members. And so we're community development, we've got a children's cause, and they will consider funding projects for operating expenses. And they do, even though one-year grants are typical, they do have multi-year grants.
And I think we actually looked at that too, and they, the majority of their grants in the past have been operated.
Yeah, we looked.
There have been others, didn't there? They have been, others have been operated.
Yeah, we looked on their Form 990 and most of their money goes to operating expenses. So anyways, that's our plan. Hundred fifty thousand would be approximately six months of our, um, operating cost. And so that's our goal, to have money in the bank before we open the doors. So that way we don't go in the full day one.
And that'll also give us a cushion. Wait, because we understand that at the very beginning, um, because they can't take the DCF subsidy right away, that might limit us on our, our enrollment a little bit for the first three months. So if we're not at full capacity, uh, you know, this gives a little bit of a cushion to get us through those first few months while we're kinda getting started and getting our enrollments up, so.
So the only thing I don't have on this slide is where does construction start in all this? Well, if all these things happen, typically ideally constructions would start, start in fall of 2020 in this scenario. But again, like I didn't put on here because it's still unknown. Like I said, if we raise more here in the pledges and donations and we can apply for foundation earlier, it, you know, everything just gets奔 forward and maybe construction can start earlier. But in our timeline today, we're probably looking at construction starting in the fall-ish and hopefully be opened by the, the next summer. So I went through that quickly and I didn't really pause for questions. Is there any other questions for myself or the board about our project?
Just curious, are I got your plans for, for drop-ins? Because I'm at full capacity and I need to drop my grandparents out for a few days so I can have my child care application process approved ahead of time or are there any?
You know, I think our board has talked about, we are gonna accept drop-ins. And I think if you're in a situation like I know myself would want it, I think I would fill out the paperwork. And if there's an opening, you know, I don't know how we're gonna advertise it. I know a lot of people use Facebook, we'll use text messages. If we find out that we have an opening, maybe we shoot it out, you know, the night before. And then, you know, parents that work part-time or even stay home and either run the garden, you know, to utilize those services.
Could also be a situation too, is once you reach a director in that position and they figure out, say, you've got a parent that only uses Monday, Wednesday, Friday type of situation. They know that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have open spots. And so drop-ins are welcome on those days. There could be a situation like that as well, so.
If they need, if they only need the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they have to pay for the whole week? Or, um, you know, like with.
On your vacation, you have to fill.
I mean, because I know like.
We fill our spots and we can fill the other part-time, yeah.
Yeah, so like our, in our tuition, we talked about weeks. But if there is a situation where there's a nurse that's Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Farm Bureau staff needs Tuesday, Thursday, you know, if we're still making the money for the week, we can divvy up those three days to the one parent and the two days to the other. But, you know, we can, we talked about those board meetings, we talked about all these different scenarios and you can just exhaust yourself with, you know, the what ifs.
I just don't buy it. They have their pay requirements, so.
The goal is to keep all the slots open. So whether we have a call list, the moms are like, hey, if you have an opening or have a day, call me. We would love to get those kids in there because we wanna stay open. And so anytime you're, you should fill it, you're helping everybody.
Would you consider half-days? I mean, I'm sure there's probably a lot of people who'll talk about.
You know, half-days actually might be kinda interesting because like with the preschool, it's half-days. So like, let's say you're more weighted with the morning class and then you only got a couple of them in the afternoon. You know, half-days may come available in that instance because, you know, morning, they go to afternoon. So you have half-day in the morning, you know? So that is something that might actually happen with the preschool.
Jenny, there's a question, uh, will the employees have benefits?
As of right now, we have, the director will have two weeks, um, paid time off. Um, but that's the only businesses, benefits we have. We can't afford to pay insurance. Uh, we're kinda hoping that, you know, maybe a spouse has insurance through another work that maybe that'll kinda hit, fill that void. Um, according to Child Care Ware, fifteen percent of centers don't offer benefits to their, uh, full-time staff. So it's not unheard of, um, to not offer. But as of right now, we're gonna start with the director, uh, paid time off. And then we'll kinda go from there, um, as it becomes operational.
We have to see as it comes, after we operate for a while, whether or not if there's funding there to provide benefits as a goal. We'd want to do that. But currently in our cash flow, it's just, there's not enough funding there, so.
With again, raising, you know, the tuition. I mean, we're really trying to keep, we're really trying to keep the tuition affordable, so. I think the hardest, I think we think the hardest position to build will be the director. The, the review of the question is, do you think we're gonna have a hard time filling the position with qualified individuals? And I, I think as a board, we're more concerned about the director position because they have to have either a college degree or education back past high school, basically. So that will be the hardest and that's why we're gonna get that one out there sooner so we can start getting the word out. And hopefully bring them our team right, you know, sooner than later. Not saying we'll be able to pay them from day one, but hopefully that they know that they can be a part of something new in this community.
Jenny, can you talk about if, um, if there's a person that has a spot and they go on vacation for two weeks with the expectation that their, their kids are missing the two days?
Um, I believe as the board, the expectation is if you want the full-time spot and you're on vacation, you'll have to pay for the full-time spot. We can't, you saw how tight our cash flow is. We can't, you cannot pay. You know, just like with the teachers, you know, just because they get three months off, they want that spot going in the, to the fall, you know, someone's gonna have to pay for it. You know, and like I said, we haven't worked with the school. Either the school will have to decide if that's part of their benefit or the teacher will have to pay for it. But again, that's gonna be something that we'll have to work through with the school. Yeah.
I don't, in your answer, it's huge, I'm just throwing it out. For the toddler and infant fathers space area, are you going to have the parents provide diapers and wipes? Or are you, uh, wanna supply all of that and not have the parents bring that stuff? I don't think that's a feature in this office.
No, I'm pretty sure, we talked about it just briefly as a board. But as of right now, we talked about like the parents will provide diapers and wipes and we'll have like a cubby to hold on to that stuff. I know that's how Greensburg did it. Um, like, you know, things that the center will provide, like we might have like the, like the cots or the towel for them to lay on, you know, um, or the mat.
We have to provide the med sheets for the kids. Parents can't provide those, um, and for the moms. So, you know, pretty much parents will bring diapers, wipes.
Formula.
Breast milk, um, and from there, we have to send care for the rest.
Extra change of clothes. So, yeah.
So you'll have to bring them any cloth diapers or is that?
That is not something we have talked about at this time. We have, I just repeat that, someone asked about cloth diapers. We have not talked about that. You know, like soon, like I said earlier, it'll probably be in our policy that will, um, have to develop here in the future.
That's another reason why we are wanting to find a director because we can sit here as a board and say, we, we think it should be this way and we think it should be that way. But the truth is, the director might see it differently. You know, that's, they get to make, they get to help make those policies with us, the board, so.
Yeah, the director's the one that's actually going to have to enforce it since we need to make sure that they're on board with our vision too, so.
So I just saw a question on Facebook Live here and it says, property tax, will it go up? So that's been a question that has been asked several times. So, uh, last week, I actually made a call to Randy, uh, which is out of our Prazer's office. He's our founding Prazer. And we discussed how this will look in a sense. So what's difficult is that the school currently, that property is tax exempt because they are a tax exempt entity. They don't have to pay property tax. However, what happens with this is the usage of that property for the school does change. So, um, that is a discussion that will be talked about in this working meeting with the school is how does ownership of this building look if something happens in the future? Where the Grow and Learn Center is ceases to exist? So who takes ownership? School would then take ownership, chances are, of that building. So because of that, can we apply for a tax exempt, uh, status ourselves as Grow and Learn Childcare Center? Because the school isn't going to be operating the center. So the answer from Randy is maybe, you can't really tell me that because this is a very strange and different situation. So his suggestion was that we have an attorney actually contact the state board, tax board, appeals. Because that is ultimately, property tax isn't exempt at your county level, it's exempt at your state level. So even your local county government, city government have to apply for exemption at the state level. So they have to put an application that says, I don't need that for property tax. So we too would have to apply at a state level. So whether the state approves it, I don't know. Is it going to make your property tax, well, no. And it'll actually decrease because if we have to pay property tax, our taxes will go on the tax bill. So it does nothing to your personal property tax at all. Uh, it's just a matter of whether or not Grow and Learn Childcare Center will have to pay property tax or will be exempt. That's all.
And as of right now, like the numbers I showed you earlier, it does not include any property tax. So if we find out we have to pay property tax, Grow and Learn does, we will have to make adjustments, um, in personnel or cut costs somewhere else.
But Rodney, you said that that's not going to affect anybody who lives in the county.
Not local property taxes, no.
Not going to affect.
No, it will not make, because we're not asking any, any community members to fund it. We're not asking you as a property owner or any of your property taxes to fund projects. All we're saying is that if you, if you believe in it, let's, let's help us with this pledge. So you go back to the same chart. But your property taxes are not gonna be affected at all in this, in this case. The only question is, is whether or not, like I said, Grow and Learn itself will be tax exempt, like the school is. And, and whether or not, um, and whether that ownership falls. Because it's, it's scary because Grow and Learn is operating on its own, but the school wants the property ownership. Because the school's just wasting it and we're putting a permanent structure. We're not putting a mobile structure that can be moved. It's a permanent building that will be on the property. So, so those are all things that we have to discuss with the school board. And then those, those will come out in that working meeting, so.
Carol, um, I was reminded that if we did choose to attach bond members, then it's, then it will do that by maybe off the, you have to have the tax rules.
Craig, did you have a question?
Sure, as far as vaccinations and stuff, you're gonna have to follow KDHE rules as far as like the school, I imagine.
Yeah, so we, when we had an, an enrollment, huh? Oh, the question was concerning vaccinations for the Childcare Center. When we had a, a sit-down enrollment conversation with KDHE, um, they did say that vaccinations are required and they recommend that we follow the school's guidelines concerning that.
And then this, this is from Facebook. And, uh, question said, it may have been discussed already, but will school employees have priority about?
Like we said earlier, we are having a working session with the school. We have discussed, but not finalized, some sort of tier system. You know, as a board, we realize the in-kind donations the school has given us with the benefits of the partnership. So we do have to keep that in consideration as we come up with some tiered system.
But nothing's that strong.
Yeah, nothing has been finalized.
Mary, have you questions?
So I do have, um, somewhere packets for you guys to take home. It's got building plans, a little letter, um, to take home. We will probably be reaching out to some folks individually, potentially posting it online. Um, anyways, please try to get the word out. I know there's some accurate and inaccurate information around the community. So we're hoping that this town hall meeting will help clarify some details. Anyways, I think besides that, if you have any questions, just make sure to reach out when the Grow and Learn Childcare Center board. Thank you.